Welcome, everyone. Nice to see your smiling faces tonight. They're all looking very good. I know the weather's gotten you down, but...
There he is. See? You missed the introduction.
I heard talking about smiling faces.
And there it is. Okay. We'll start with old business. Consider Resolution 19, 2017 authorizing budget adjustments. This was last week's, last Tuesday's meeting, and we did not pass it because there were a few math problems or concerns which I can see have been addressed, so everything's matching now.
On my copy here, under number two, it says, "To parking meter fees, $2,000 and[62.51][62.51]$2,000," which shouldn't be "to" and "from"?
No, I asked her about that. What she's doing is she's not taking the money from any place.
I see.
There's additional revenue that has occurred in the budget year, so she's putting the budget, the additional money into...
Okay. And same in building and fire?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
And she did, Michelle is very good at that. So if you read the, "To increase overall budget for revenue received..."
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to authorize these changes, or these adjustments?
To approve the resolution.
What's that?
To approve the resolution.
Right. Do I have a second?
So, a second?
Okay. It's a roll call vote, so trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Baloda?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, for the past probably two years, we've been, and that's not an exaggeration, we've been working on our benefits package, our employees' benefit package, and which we felt really needed a lot of clarification and updating. There were contributions that needed adjustment, and just some stuff that I think we eliminated. So anyway, like I said, for the past two years, mostly Marie and Fran, who's involved somewhat, have gone back and forth and talking with our attorney, and writing, and rewriting, and rewriting, and rewriting, until we finally have come up with a package at the 11th hour that I believe everyone's happy with, finally. I mean, some things are really small, but we had just had to keep changing them, tweak them, make them right, or else we're gonna have another benefits package that's unclear. We wanted something that all the employees and the retirees could understand, so we really worked very hard at getting the wording right, and we kept in mind the whole time, you know, this is a sensitive matter. It's an issue where you're talking about your employees, and you want to do right by them, but you also want to do right by the village and the taxpayers, so I think we've come up with, you know, a very good package. And Marie, if you'd like to, you guys, Marie and Fran, if you'd like to jump in on this. First is a resolution number 20, 2017, amending village policy on active employee, current retiree, and current surviving spouse of retiree health insurance benefits. Can I have a motion to consider this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? You might want to just give a brief overview of what this resolution actually is?
All right. What this resolution does is it establishes for retirees, surviving spouses of retirees, and for employees, that there will be contributions required from retirees and surviving spouses of retirees for the retirement health insurance benefits that they currently receive. The contribution is 12 percent, is being established at 12 percent, effective June 1st, 2017, with an escalation each year of 1 percent. And there's the rationale for doing this specifically is that, and I'll read the legislative findings and intent, "The village of Coltsrum previously established a plan of post-retirement health insurance benefits for certain employees by subsidizing the cost of health insurance premiums for certain classes of retirees. In addition, some retirees receive Medicare Part D reimbursements, which results in net profit to some retirees. This board of trustees finds and determines that the cost of such village subsidized benefits has steadily increased over the past eight years between 25 percent and 50 percent, with the average being 46 percent. Additionally, the rise in cost of state and federal mandates coupled with the cost of pension benefits and existing employee and retiree health insurance benefits can no longer be sustained, especially in light of the state imposed tax cap." That is the reason why we're establishing this new policy. If it is approved tonight, we will be sending a letter to all retirees, employees, and surviving spouses of retirees notifying them of this change, including a copy of the, enclosing with that letter a copy of the resolution, and a second copy of the letter asking them to sign on the dotted line that they acknowledge that they have received the information. Their signature does not imply their agreement to or disagreement with this particular policy. We're also establishing a date for their first payment, which will be June 30th, 2017. We'll also send a customized form to each employee identifying the specific cost of their retirement health insurance benefits, and exactly how much they are expected to pay for the remainder of the calendar year. We'll be notifying all retirees and surviving spouses of retirees in late December, early January of any increase in their health insurance premiums for that year.
Okay. I think it should also be pointed out, in the old benefits package, there was a contribution made by active employers, but once, employees, sorry, but once you reach retirement, there was no contribution, for whatever reason. I don't know how that was written, or how it got that way, but, you know, in the case of, you know, some of our recent retired employees, they're only 55 years old, and so that would mean they would be, we'd be paying somewhere like $23,000 more for, till they reach retirement, so that's another 10 years there, and we have another, some other employees on the way that will have the chance to retire that can, and so it would be a huge chunk out of our total overall budget if we're paying full benefits for everyone that's retired. So what we're asking is basically the same percentage, although it's adjusted because of Medicare, in retirement that the employees are contributing now, or will be expected to be paying with the new package.
I think at this point, probably the low number for what we're paying for a retiree, a single retiree who's on Medicare is in the $5,500 range per year?
Five thousand, 5,600, I think.
Yeah, the high number for a retiree who's not on Medicare, who has a family that's somewhere in the $25,000 range per year, and that number goes up on a regular basis, every year, those insurance, and we've had this, as you may recall, over this year, we've had meetings with our employees, looking at alternate benefits packages, none of which they were happy with, none of which they wanted, none of which will do with the current policy that they have does for them, and they did not want to change, and so they had said to us at that point that they, as current employees, would be willing to pay more to keep what they have, you know, and so that's where we are. We're talking about, that's just the retiring portion, but without considering the active employees.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the village policy on active employee, current retirees and current surviving spouses of retiree health insurance benefits. It's a roll call vote, so Mayor Morandeau votes aye. Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Baloda?
Yes.
And trustee Early?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and thank you, thank you very much. What's that?
It's a good job, that's an incredible piece of work. We haven't enough done yet.
No, just finish, go ahead.
So far, so far.
Next, can I have a motion to amend employee package? This is Resolution number 21-2017.
So moved. A second.
Who do we have a second from?
I got a second.
Fran has a second.
Liz.
Whoever, okay.
Fran has a second.
Okay. You guys can take it over and then go over the highlights maybe, or also the resolution.
So what we're, what we've just, Dave has just identified is a resolution which amends the employee benefits package. The amendment, the modifications to the employee benefits package was very far-reaching. It includes identification of employees that were hired post-September 30th, 2016, and changes to those employees that were hired prior to 2000, September 30th, 2016. The language was simplified, it was clarified, the benefits are different based upon your date of hire, pre-September 30th, 2016, post-September 30th, 2016, and we established a new rate of contribution for employees toward their current employee medical benefits plan. And there are different rates of contribution, pre-2016, September 30th, post-September 30th, 2016. We went, we did as best we could to make the language more straightforward, to be as consistent as possible across the various topics. We introduced a new topic called PTR, which is paid time off. In the past, we identified vacation days, sick days, and personal days, and now we just talk about PTO days, which is those three types of days. An employee is given a certain number of PTO days at the beginning of the village's fiscal year, and they are available to be used in any way the employee so desires for the fiscal year. At the end of the fiscal year, we establish ground rules for what can be done with any remaining earned and unused PTO days. They can be banked into the retirement medical option plan for those employees who need to bank those days. They can be cashed out at the end of the fiscal year, or they can be deferred. We establish how many days can be deferred for use in a future fiscal year. So that...
Yeah, it's important to note that as we made this transition from vacation, personal, sick days into what we're now calling PTO days, we did not take away any days, so what previously an employee would get after a year of service, 10 vacation days, 12 personal days, and 12 sick days, they're now getting 26 PTO days. So we haven't taken for anybody hired prior to September 30th, they haven't lost any time, it's just that now it's all, it is one thing, and this is the way a lot of companies are going now. Paid time off is, makes it easier for the employer to have to not police sick days, vacation days, or whatever, you just take what you have, and you don't have to worry about, at the end of the year, you can carry over 12 vacation days, but you're gonna lose your sick days if you can't carry all your personal days. It's all a lump, one lump, with one rule. Employees hired after September 30th have a little bit of a different numbers in years of service, and what they've earned, and how they have to take it, but they, and also employers hired, employees hired after September 30th will no longer be contributing to the retirement medical option in terms of banking 150 or 180 days. They will however have to work longer in order to qualify for the retirement medical option, so instead of saying, "You have to work with us 10 years, and you have to bank 180 days to, for us to pay your medical for the rest of your life," we're saying, "You don't have to bank any days, you can use all of your days, but you have to work with us 20 years in order to get a medical."
And you must be 60 years old.
You must be 60 years old. So those are some of the changes, and the employees, I guess, will get copies of this to look over, and we'll get together with them and answer any questions that they may have. We clarified any redundant, or any sections that were, you know, we all looked at as people previously in the past two years have retired, or resigned, or whatever, you know, we read this, and we read it, and we read it in most cases. Neither us nor the lawyers could figure out exactly what was meant in some of these paragraphs, so we got rid of stuff that didn't make any sense to us, and we'll draw from there. Marie, do we, okay, do we want to make one adjustment on this before we approve it?
Uh, thank you, Fran. In the employee benefits package, page number 14, there is a question of when employee contributions to health insurance coverage, we're not talking retirement medical insurance, now we're talking about current active employee insurance. The way the package reads, the employees' increase in contribution, so if you go to page 14, Article IX, Section A, 1A, the way this reads, employees hired prior to September 30th, 2016, their contribution amount increases on January 1st of 2018, 2019, 2020. We had originally identified this as a June date, because June 1st is the beginning of the village's fiscal year, so I'd like you to consider that change to that particular section, to, so one section, Article, Article 9, Section A, 1A, line number 3 would say effective June 2nd, June 1st, 2018, line 4 would say effective June 1st, 2019, and line 5 would say effective June 1st, 2020.
I think that just makes it easier, because it goes with, whether they will get raises, if they get raises each year, or when the change of the fiscal year is...
That makes sense.
And it makes sense.
If a premium increases, they will still have to pay increased premium. It's the difference between the 12 percent and the 13 percent, which would kick in on June 1st. Retirees will be asked to contribute a higher percentage on January 1st. Retirees, we're establishing that as a calendar year, whereas active employees, we're establishing that on a village fiscal year. So I'd like to make a motion to amend the, not yet adopted, employee benefits package to make this...
For the last time, I hope.
To make that change to page number 14.
I'll second that.
All in favor of the change, page 14?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna read the resolution, it's short, and I think it's worth reading. "Whereas the board of trustees of the village of Coltsrum desire to make certain revisions to its employee benefit package by replacing it with a new employee benefit package which is attached as Exhibit A heretofore, and which shall be effective as of June 1st, 2017. And whereas the new employee benefit package shall apply to full-time employees scheduled to work at least 35 hours per week, and are not otherwise party to a collective bargaining agreement. And whereas the new employee benefits package intends to make revisions to the existing employee benefit plan, including but not limited to changes to the leave, overtime, and retirement medical option plan benefits provided to eligible employees thereunder. And whereas, after analysis and discussion, the trustees of the village of Coltsrum have determined that it would be in the best interest of the village to adopt the new employee benefit package as of June 1st, 2017. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the new employee benefit package attached heretofore as Exhibit A shall be effective as of June 1st, 2017, for all eligible full-time employees, and that it shall repeal and replace all pre-existing employee benefit packages except to the extent otherwise provided therein." Resolution, okay, so it's a roll call vote. I vote aye. Trustee Murphy?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Baloda?
Aye.
And trustee Early?
Aye.
Thank you guys very, very much.
This doesn't affect the highway department, though, is there, if you're on agreement, right?
No, the highway department is affected, they're not...
By the way, I'm saying, they're under this collective bargaining agreement that they have, no?
No, not ours.
I know.
The only one that's under the collective bargaining is the police.
I will open it up to, like, to the floor just for these resolutions, since we're on them. If anyone has any questions, we're glad to answer them on these, while we're hot on it. Okay, I just thought, yeah, the highway department, we only have one collective bargaining unit, that's the police. So the highway, which has four employees usually, and then eligible employees who have one part-time, and Kathy Costello?
Two part-time.
Is Kathy?
Yeah, and then Michelle.
And then, and Bishard, she's part-time.
Michelle.
And Michelle also, our treasurer is...
Four and seven.
What's that?
Four and seven.
Yeah.
It's part-time.
Two and seven.
Two and seven. So they're scattered out, we don't really have that many. Okay, so thank you again. It's a huge undertaking, and it's well worth it. Next is authorize salary increases for fiscal year 17, 18. I do not have any documentation with that, can't remember exactly what we agreed on.
We agreed on, I, we agreed on everyone getting a 2 percent increase, plus those who are covered by medical benefits are getting a one-time increase, that's a quota unto the difference between what they were paying, it's 7 percent of the premium, to what they are now going to be paid based on this package, is 12 percent of the premium, so it comes to, for those with a family, it's something like $1,200 and change, is an annual amount. So in general, 2 percent, everyone gets, and then everyone will get a one-time increase of about $1,200, which is the difference, because we're asking them to jump their contribution for the employee benefit package from 7 percent to 12 percent, so we're making that even to them for this year, so...
And then moving ahead, they'll pay the increase, they'll pay that percentage.
So that it's not such a big jump for them this year.
And I don't have... We gotta talk to Jeff about giving us a little more documentation of this.
Yeah, we had it last week, and then we don't have it.
It doesn't matter, because the first salary check will not be until the second, so we can...
We had the list last week, which I don't have.
Do you want it to produce till next week?
If we can, then that's not a problem.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll table that until we see the list.
All right, then we can get the definite numbers.
Yep.
So we'll table that, we'll table D on their old business, till we have the exact numbers, we weren't finished in the documentation of it. Next is authorize signatory for court bank accounts, adding Tom Costello. So I'll make the motion to authorize Tom Costello as another signator for court bank accounts.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, authorize salary for Jeff Vidakovic, village clerk treasurer. Again, I don't have any supporting documents, I believe. I talked him, and we settled on $25 an hour, that's a discussion that now. Mary makes $26.10, which was probably low for someone taking...
She made $26.10, plus was there a stipend for being treasurer?
There was, yeah, but we're, no, no, there was a stipend for being a...
Register?
Register, yeah.
And I think there was also a stipend for treasurer.
I think she had two stipends, so if we pay exactly $25, without a stipend for treasurer, I think we're okay.
Okay, yeah, I could, they only told me to, and it was just the registrar, they did not say there was anything else. I asked Michelle, she said there wasn't. Okay. So is everyone agreeing with $25?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to authorize salary for Jeff Vidakovic, actually, village clerk treasurer, for $25 per hour, plus the, he's full-time, so plus the benefits package afforded, a full-time employee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Also need to, well, we can just, I can add it to the next, what we need to discuss, Jeff will be taking in applications from the building department before they're sent up to the town, so I think there should be a stipend for that, it's gonna be somewhat time-consuming, getting everything together, and also getting, putting things together, like, so that we can move them up there, it's gonna take some time. There is money in the budget, it's like, close to $4,000 that I believe was for clerical in that area, so, I don't know, do you think we need that now?
I don't think you need it now.
I would say if he needs extra time, but if he can handle it, the course of his normal...
No, it can't, it's like adding another, I think there should be a stipend given for it, I think he'll be here, and he can do it, but...
Let's put some numbers against it.
Okay. All right, now, let's see if I get it together for next week, but I really, we should consider adding it, because it's definitely another layer. You know, yes, everyone that's coming in, he has to take the money, he's going to document it, so, okay. One last note on, which I'd add to G, was that the Phillips Town Board approved consolidation of the building department last Wednesday, which I am very grateful for, thank you immensely. This will afford the residents of the village five days of, you know, of a fully staffed building department versus the part-time situation we have now. So there is rumor out there that Bill was fired, that's not the case, his position has been eliminated, but it's for the betterment, I believe, of all the residents, the same amount of money, less actually, than we're paying now, we will have, you know, full-time building department. So if someone has a call, they don't have to wait till Wednesday, or Tuesday, 2 o'clock, or whatever the hours are, they'll be able to contact the town hall. This also is, is an initiative that the state has asked everyone, you know, is interested in consolidation, and actually, it's kind of a requirement, moving forward, that we, we move towards consolidation wherever possible, so I think this is a really good move, and, you know, I think there's gonna probably be a few, you know, tripping points on the way at the beginning, but I think that we can smooth those out, and working with Jeff here, who's familiar with the building department, we can work with Greg on that. So that has been approved, and will go into effect June 1st. We're gonna, we're working on getting all the applications together that are, you know, being processed, and where they are, and the status of everything, and, you know, getting a spreadsheet or something similar to Greg, so, you know, it plays up against, and, you know, we'll meet with him, obviously, before. Again, thank you to Phillips Town, and I think the residents will be very happy with the move. Okay, new business, another request for selling village property, stoop adjacent to 66th Main Street, Gail Greath Hannah, the owner. We had just approved a sale, just down the street here, at Barbara Brew, and since we can still maintain somewhat control over that, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't sell this stoop either, so...
We need to notify her what our requirements are, which is a survey, and the size of the portion of the street that she wishes to purchase.
Okay.
Jeff has any information?
Okay, so...
Do you feel so excited that they'll ask it?
I didn't ask Jeff what requirements he was requesting.
Okay, so do you want to approve that at the next meeting, or do you want...
No, I think we can go and do it now, as long as she conforms to the requirements.
Okay. I will take a resolution to approve the sale of village property to 66th Main Street, on meeting all requirements that we've set in the past, like, we, it's $4 a square foot.
Second there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Plus expensive, yes.
Next is consider additional cost for the fair street rehabilitation. Seems like they, they're all ready to move on this, they're, we're trying to not excavate the street, and so, I talked to Greg today, after they did a little more, you know, looking into the pipes, there is one section that they can't quite get to, but there is a way they can do it with, actually, mechanical, with this mechanic...
Device.
Device, yeah, thank you. And so, but it'd be an additional $3,500, but it will also save us in the long run from tearing up the street, repaving, and... long run from tearing up the street and repaving, and so, we have the money, it's already budgeted, it's still, still within the, the numbers we have, so I believe we should move ahead with that.
It's like a no-brainer.
Like to make a motion on that one, like, brave is nothing to-
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to proceed with the additional expense of thirty-five hundred dollars for the Fair Street, Fair Street Collection main rehabilitation. This involves using a, what is called a can cutter, when there is the experience of protruding service lateral. In other words, if this is the pipe, the sewage pipe, there are situations where the lateral coming in from a business or a house protrudes into the pipe. The can cutter, just think of it as a reamer that goes through the sewer line and eliminates the protrusion. So it's, although it's invasive in the, in the pipe, it does not require excavation to eliminate the protrusions.
Second the motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is consider bids for zero-turn riding mower. The reason I was, I was interested in doing this is we have mowers which are very slow to say the least, so the cutting time is, and the labor involved in that is, you know, it's, it's-
Significant.
Significant, exactly, for the amount of properties that we, we cut, so, you know, I contacted some of the local businesses that, you know, that use zero-turn machines, they recommended Skag mowers, riding mowers, so we did put that out to bid, received the bids and opened those today. There's only two bids. This also includes a three-bag system, which Russ Terry, who does the lawns for us, recommended so that it would be also a savings of time for raking and bringing grass clippings to certain areas where he couldn't dump them now with this, this bag system, he'll be able to dispose of them easier, so another cost saving. Also in eventual, I believe we'll be, hopefully, at some point, we will take over dockside property. We do cut that now, it's a large area, so to have, the mowers that we have now are just slow-riding mowers, so again, Russ should be able to do a lot more properties and there should be a cost saving. So the two bids, one was from Brady's in Stormville, was ten thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-five cents, and one from Cutting Edge Equipment in Carmel was ten thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty cents. They're both apples to apples. The Cutting Edge, the lower bid, also include no extra costs, two extra sets of blades, Kawasaki oil and filter for your first oil change, which they say is worth a hundred and fifty dollar value. So I would like to make a motion to purchase the zero-turn riding mower from Cutting Edge Equipment at the lower bid of ten thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I just wanna point out that Dave wants to be the first one to ride the mower.
That's not true, I'd probably crash it. No, actually, that'd be fine.
We all have to be able to get a turn.
Yeah, all right, in a big, open area. Next, we have new hires, latest news on the Highway Department, we were down to three, three employees there, our crew chief and two, and two labors, and one of them, known as Bugsy, broke his foot last week, so he'll be out for maybe eight weeks.
So then there were two.
So now there are two, so please be patient. We were already moving ahead with hiring someone to fill a one vacancy in summer help, but unfortunately, the people we, you know, the person I, we wanna hire for full-time and the person for summer help won't be able to, you know, start for another two weeks because they had to get notice, and one's a high school student for the summer help, so guess a week for the nineteenth for school to end. So we're short on labors, we do have someone that helps out, Tommy Hopper on garbage, which is, which is key, and much appreciated and needed, so some things might not get done quite as quickly, so hopefully everyone will have a little patience with that. So the new hires, I just interviewed, we're talking labors here, so I interviewed a few people, and I'd like to, I'd like to appoint Zachary Langer as a full-time labor at the hourly rate of fifteen dollars an hour.
Plus benefits.
Plus benefits associated with full-time.
Second.
This would also be under a one-year probationary period, as all are. Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Second would be summer help for the Highway. Coincidentally, it's Colin Downey, who is the son of Robert Downey, and who I interviewed, and has experience with mowing and working with his dad and whatever, so.
This is part-time?
This is part-time. Part-time summer, it's just for the summer, part-time. And I believe we paid twelve dollars an hour to last year's summer help, so I'll make a motion to hire Colin Downey for summer help at the rate of twelve dollars per hour.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Last, we need, we need some help with summer records labeling and storing some of materials we have. This is a request from both Jeff and Mary, who is leaving, actually, Mary's last day was today, so Max hadn't, had worked here before, Hayden or hadn't?
Hayden.
Hadn't, had worked here before helping out, and he applied also for the job, and so I'd like to make a motion to appoint Max as a summer help for records management.
Second.
Oh, what, right?
Yeah, I don't, it was-
I think we said ten? Max actually had volunteered while summer worked here, so he wasn't paid.
Okay, I would say ten dollars an hour.
I think he said ten, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
It's, it sounds right, because the laborer is a toss, it sounds, so that sounds right.
I think that's what we had talked about.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay, I'll read, I'll read, I'll make a new motion. I'll make a motion to hire Max Hayden as a part-time summer help, or for summer help as record management at the rate of ten dollars per hour.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
How old is he?
Sixteen.
So he's usually just-
He has work, he pays for sixteen.
Anything else from the board tonight? Anything from the audience?
Just with the question, will the, I see you have the Building Inspector's email here, are those emails gonna be forwarded to our building inspector or, or are they just gonna, we'll let Jeff take, or maybe take care of that?
Yeah, we will have to change that, yeah. Did not look at that, so, yeah, we'll have to do that, to change the building. That'll probably go to your building inspector. We're gonna have to, you know, do a little promotional, promotional on this, because what we'd like to do, and discussed with, with Richard and Greg also, was that Jeff, we've taken all applications here, so that'll say the same, and, but what we didn't want was it going back and forth, back and forth, so if he brings it here, if people bring their applications here, Jeff can make sure that their permits are all in order, instead of sending them up there, and then Greg's saying they're not in order, sending them back and sending them back, so Jeff will be able to see if everything's in order, if they're, you know, complete, he'll also take the check, you know, which we'll deposit, and, and then it'll be sent up to Greg.
Jeff was supposed to also determine if he's going, if he's going planning for the HDRB.
No, he won't, he might put a note on that, but that's really gonna be determined by, I think initially, he'll, he'll put a note on that to draw attention to it, but he's not the one to determine that really. Greg, once he gets used to the, you know, how our boards work, he'll be, I think, the only difference would be the HDRB, pretty much, from your board, but, but he wouldn't be the one doing that, he's, doesn't have the qualifications.
That's what Richard mentioned to us.
What's that?
Richard brought up the fact that he would need to go to a board here in the village before it came to us, it'd be identified, so he wouldn't go up to him and say, oh, this has to do with the planning board of the village, so that's what we got.
No, we wouldn't be able to do that.
Well, we can discuss, that was what we did, we did bring up.
Yeah, I heard, I did talk to Richard about that. So, yeah, we wouldn't be making it determined, it would have to be from a building inspector, you know, someone qualified, so that would have to be Greg.
And it would require knowledge, Greg's knowledge of the local zoning code, which determines which applications go to the HDRB or the zoning board or the planning board, so some level of knowledge of that is required. So having Jeff indicate who they go to would be helpful to get started, and which reminds me that we need to get our website updated to include Greg's email address as the building inspector. We need to take down the, the notice in the logbook here about the hours for the building inspector here, so we'll, we'll need to-
Yeah, I understand.
Get this all worked out. Yeah, and the village code is online, he probably wants a hard copy of the village code.
Probably would like that one.
I think he must have brought him, he must have done that.
He probably hasn't.
I think Mary's got them pretty much up to date, I had done them up to date about a year ago, so Mary has-
We've had, we've had changes, and to the best of my knowledge, we haven't gone through an online update.
Mary may have them updated as fast as we do, I'm gonna go in my closet, level check.
Okay.
Okay, but good point, we need to make some changes there to, to not have notifications.
Like the, all the street changes that we made last year, those all have to be reflected in the village code, the online village code.
Yes, right.
My Gary, I told Main Street, I thought it was only one point, but now there's another point that was brought up by your comment about the accident, I just, maybe, we're already doing this, maybe not, but maybe need to think about what these little employees coming in with the Highway Department, are they getting sufficient safety trainings, is something that might be done early in the summer when you've got summer labors, saving temporary help of safety training, whatever that is, keep down the chance of the accidents, whatever those are, that's being done. Minimize the loss of work, you know, of the village, that's all about that. Second point was, I'd like to talk about this idea that the little stoops being sold, I have some questions, I have well-rounded qualms and concerns about the list about that thing, in the sense that, my understanding, which may be incorrect, is that village stoops are part of the right-of-way, so to speak, of largely Main Street, and if this is true, then if you're selling a stoop, you're selling part of the right-of-way, you're not really selling a parcel, which reduces the right whale. Right whale may be seventy-five feet wide, or whatever it is, fifty feet wide, typically, whatever it is, but I'm just, I have some qualms about this, the list about this, because I'm not even really sure it's, fits within the bounds of what the village can do, which is sell a right-of-way to, to a street which has been laid out, so that's, you may or may not have heard of this episode that occurred in Beacon about three, four weeks ago, where a builder just said, start building on the sidewalk, and apparently somehow he owns the sidewalk, but then there was a big brimaha and he had to cut the concrete and redesign his model. But if you look also in Beacon, other places decades ago, what typically happens is, what has happened, is people have encroached on the sidewalks, so you may have a nineteen century, three-story building that's got a, built on the previous width of the, or the boundary of the Main Street, the boundary of the right, of the right way, and then somehow they encroach, and you end up with these one-story things that, they're actually, I don't know how they start out, but they end up starting, one-story buildings that sit in front of or are attached to the three-story building, so you still have a look at the views. So I'm not, I'm not really sure where this goes if he starts selling off the stoops, because the ones that sold this private property and then, I know we have an HDRB, I know we got a building department, but let's say, you know, somebody's looking the other way, and somebody, somebody said, okay, well, I own this property, so I have the right to build on it, that's that.
Frank, I just wanna point out that the B one district, which is all of Main Street, has a, either a fifty-foot or sixty-foot front yard setback, so nobody can build on their stoops. I, I don't think that, that fear is, will ever be realized. It would, building on a stoop would be a violation of the zoning code.
It would be now, I mean incrementally, it's been in the past, and incrementally we do, it may happen so slowly, we'll see it happen, but, I don't know, I think, I, the idea of selling a right-of-way as opposed to selling a village-owned parcel, or parcel over on Pop Street, or somewhere on Fair Street, and if you're aware of its village-owned parcel, is actually separate from a public right-of-way, so to speak, I don't really know, I think that, those are two different things, but that's just my thought.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.